Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the work session of the Salisbury City Council on February 5, 2018. We have a full agenda tonight, so we'll get started. The first thing up is the Chop Tank Electric Annexation. Mr. Holland, you're up.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Good afternoon.
And you?
Doing very well, thank you.
Better than the last time, if you remember.
Yes.
I've come back with the annexation agreement, annexation plan, fiscal impact statement, and it was provided for your review prior to going to the public hearing. And what I provided you was sections that was taken out. A request by Mr. Hickson here who represents Chop Tank Electric. And the first one was removing the section regarding the battery markers. The city surveyors explained that the battery markers that are currently there would be sufficient, and we can take that out. And there's a section on page 507 regarding section G on page 507 that they wanted removed. I'm not sure.
The way it reads, the way I understand it, we would have to come to the city to get approval if we were going to put any kind of lien on that property. And the bottom line is that all of Chop Tank's assets-
Can you sit forward, please?
Yes. All of Chop Tank's assets are covered under a blanket lien to our lender. He has a lien on all of our assets, and he's going to get a lien, or not he, but it is going to get a lien on anything we ever acquire. We owe, what, over $100 million bucks? So they're not going to let us not give them a lien.
Okay. Question from Mr. Tillman. Does this present an issue for us by striking this?
I don't really think so, given who it is.
Okay, well, I, okay.
I don't see it as a likely issue or problem.
Okay. Those are the only two changes.
That's the only two from the annexation agreement. Going to the annexation plan, there's some vocabulary changes, some dates plugged in. There's been several words that have been plugged in, but there's been no sections or anything like that removed.
I can address them if you'd like.
Let me get to them first.
Maybe page might be 49 on the-
Forty-six on, oh yeah, it's 49 on the packet, forty-six. Just the date change. Dates have been inserted. There's a question on attachment one.
That was my question as to whether it was clearly marked or not it was.
Yeah, it's, uh-
Okay.
And it will be.
Yeah, that will be addressed.
Yeah.
Okay.
There are several, there are about three places in there that I requested be changed because it said, the way it reads, the statement is something to the effect that we're not going to make any improvements on the property. And that would lock us in. In the near term, we plan on expanding and possibly moving our training facility, which really is nothing but some utility poles stuck in the ground and maybe a transformer or two, something like that. But the way it read, we wouldn't even be able to do that.
Yeah. So one thing I question, Mr. Tillman, is they inserted the word substantial.
Where are we, what line?
Uh, page forty, well, on the document, it's 49.
Oh, 49, gotcha.
Forty-nine of the actual document.
Yeah, there's, same thing on 50. Page 50.
The inclusion of the word substantial there, I think the point of that is, is that there is nothing of any large size or substance that's currently in the works we're talking about. It sounds like from a training facility, it's not-
Yeah, it's not, I would classify that as not substantial. We don't have any plans for any substantial improvement, but there are 40 acres out there. Someday, they probably will.
But I mean, if you were to develop and do like a training facility or something, it would be properly fenced or protected.
Oh, yes.
That's, that would be my one concern.
I guess the only question I have from my perspective is, if you don't have the definition of what substantial is, and they have 46 acres, if it's a quarter acre something, is that substantial? I'm probably nitpicking.
Well, I mean, if it's that much, I mean, my perspective is, why even have that line in there at all? I mean, it's their property. If they want to develop it, they have the right to develop it. So I mean, is that even necessary to have in there?
I'm guessing that that's in there to make the development plan fly with the State Planning Department.
And so, I mean, to the extent that you can control the development of the property at the time of the annexation, but I mean, it's going to be used for a specific purpose, the purposes of the company at this point.
Right.
I mean, that's what the agreement says. So I guess, you know, I guess theoretically, you're right. They could build a fairly large facility on that property, but then they'd still have to deal with-
They'd still have to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so, okay.
We have to get all the permits that anyone would have to get.
That's fine.
They're not going to put a stress on, you know, the-
But it, but my question is now, if we do this, and then they decide 10, 15 years down the road that they want to do, you know, further develop it, would they now have to change the annexation agreement?
No, not the-
They would have to come to the-
They would have to come to the planning, but not have to go through, because I know that, I mean, we've dealt with the changes that take 18 months, so.
Yeah. No, they have to come back to the planning and zoning.
It's unlikely that anything that they would build would put a substantial strain on police, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, if they decide to build a solar farm out there.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody? Okay.
All right, if you go to the last item, it's fiscal impact memo, which is a memo that summarizes costs and revenues associated with this annexation. And in conclusion, the annexation will have a positive fiscal impact on the city with an approximate, generation of approximately 13 to 60 a year, with costs running maybe around $6,500, $6,900 a year.
Any questions about that? Okay.
This, I guess the next point of order is public hearing date.
Right.
And I've already spoken with Hickson about this, and there's going to be some dates that he's away. I'm first looking at March 26, but I think we see that-
March 26, if you're okay.
I'm looking for March 26.
Okay.
So that for March 26, advertised four times due to the acreage size. So I'll be, I already have the ad written, so I'll get with you. And I'll have to get with Mark's office to put the whole package together. It's about 75 pages or so. Get everything in order. This Friday, I'll be, myself and city planner, making a visit out there, doing inspection. They want, they're requesting a new certificate of occupancy from the city to be included into the annexation package. So we'll get to go out there and visit a facility.
Okay. Ms. Nichols, you're okay with that date?
Yes.
Because that gives us eight weeks or something like that. Okay, so we can get the advertisement done.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? We can move forward then? Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next up is the park rental request and fee schedule. Andy?
Good evening.
Yeah.
How are you? Hi, I'm gosh, I'm doing great. So we talked about this a little bit at the last work session, and taking your thoughts into consideration, I made some modifications, which I highlighted on the memo.
Yep, all those.
I also included a copy of their rental request and use agreement and how that would lay out on the thing. Main thing to point out, because Councilman Irtin, you were not at that meeting, we talked about giving a break to people who are going to be doing small family functions. I couldn't remember if you had said up to 25 or 20 people. I put 20 on here, but it could go either way for me. And those small family functions where people are just using it in small capacities, we'd still go with our current rate, which is the dollar. We'd still would want to go ahead and get them filled the paperwork so we had it on file, et cetera. And then again, with this use agreement, you can see that people are still obligated. There's restrictions to the use of space. There's insurance requirements if you're having a major scale of function. And then also, if you do any sort of damage to the facility, we can hold you accountable at a different, at a later date. That's kind of where we're at. I can go over more of it if you want me to.
No, it addresses the issues that I had. I don't know if anybody else would think, I think we're in a lot better shape than we were before. So I think it clarifies it. And essentially, the kicker is if they use any of the facilities, like the restrooms, kitchen things, then all these fees would apply.
Right. I also was requested to come up with a cost that is carried by our field operations to have to do the work. Tom gave me a number through the whole season, which is April through the end of October. It's about 30 weekends. They said it's about $7,000 in labor, which is about $233 per weekend. That's an additional to clean up the circuit of the parks after weekend use.
Excellent. Any other questions?
No.
Move forward. We do have one request for comment. Nancy Roysem, Nancy, come on up, please, and use the podium and please give us your name and where you live.
Hello, council members and audience. My name's Nancy Roysem. I've lived in Salisbury for 12 years, and I now live very close to the city park. My interest in parks has extended throughout my entire career, and most of my vacations are spent in parks. So I put together some information to be considered in the discussion about the fees. I didn't know where you were with this process. And includes a, six pages from Jackson, Missouri, which has a very, very extensive list of permit fees for everything from picnic shelters to boat slips. So I don't know if that enters into this discussion or not, but there it is for you to look at. They had their 2017 rates and their 2018 rates for comparison. So along with that, I'd just like to share some thoughts in setting park fees. If and when food trucks are allowed, and I know that was being considered somewhere along the line, I believe they should display a large, easily read permit placard stating the dates and the precise parking location so that citizens could easily check whether they were supposed to be there or not. And they should also agree to abide by local noise ordinances, which I believe we passed, maybe not.
Yeah.
And if it's an ongoing food provider, they should be competitively bid, or if it's just for one day use catering, should just be for a very limited time and not bid. Special events fees, such as the run walks that utilize our parks and areas, my question is, is there a per capita fee assessed to offset the cost of street closures, police coverage, cleanups, and other maintenance concerns? Are you familiar with what a per capita fee would be? Many of these charge like a $35 entrance fee. It includes a T-shirt, and they sign up, sign a waiver, and that sort of thing. Per capita fee would be like just a couple dollars. That automatically goes back to the city for its maintenance costs. Question about Caldwell Pony League Field since we were talking about fees. I don't know how much they pay to rent the entire field for 365 days a year. It's about three acres of parkland that's locked off from the rest of us park users. But I'm hoping that its rental fee is fair and commensurate with what they're getting. Also, I am a little concerned about the trash pickup around the facility. They have trash bins, usually eight or so, that sit in front of the facility, between the facility and the street, for an extended period of time, which is understandable if they're using city services, because their pickup day may be several days after their activities. Also, they have piles of construction materials behind the facility, and they don't look very nice when you're walking through the park trying to enjoy nature. Another concern I have is, and our mayor has taken care of this just in the last year a little bit, is that the maintenance budget for the city park is very, very low compared to other cities. The zoo maintenance budget is twice the city parks, and I believe it's been living off that great budget, and it's probably very realistic for a long time. And it covers only a quarter of the acreage that the city park maintenance budget has to cover. I did a little online comparison of other city zoo programs, and none of them really compare to what we have here in Salisbury. But some of the program fees and the times open might be looked at. Many are closed in the winter, and the Ocelot Shop, for instance, is closed during winter when some of us would probably like to use our money and buy some holiday gifts. I firmly believe in the free entrance to the zoo to the general public. I think it's one of the things that the city is well-known for, and it's a great, great concept. But it looks like the fees for the groups that come to the zoo are about one-third to one-half the amount that other city zoos are charging. I'm concerned about, in a general fashion, that any fee increases reflect the people who are using the park and their socioeconomic status. So I'm hoping that an analysis of any fee increases goes forward. And that would include actual costs to the city, such as admin and extra maintenance, and the users who would be paying the fees. And that, in addition to my copy of the Missouri city fees, is all that I have to say.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Andy?
I think he's done a remarkable job.
Okay. Good. Consensus then? Good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Next is Designating Salisbury as a Bee City USA affiliate. Mr. Faselli? Sit here, Tony. Thanks very much. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So I'm just going to give kind of a brief summary of what we are starting here with. So the Sustainability Advisory Committee, that you all know as the Green Team in short, met with a portion of the zoo committee, Mary Seaman, who actually proposed this idea to us as part of their work that they've already started. So granted, the zoo is already doing a portion of the Bee City work, basically. The big detail that we kind of covered in the application process is what all it actually entails for us to become quote-unquote Bee City certified. And in front of you, if you guys didn't get a copy of it, I can always supply it to you, should be basically the application process. And that process entails a series of different steps. Part of it is for a resolution that you all would have to support, but we also have to do like an educational week. We have to show reduction in pesticides, herbicides, things of that nature. Granted, Casey on my right is kind of giving a little bit of detail of what benefits we get in promoting Bee City and being more of a bee sustainable community. Granted, and all the information that we got, long story short, is any piece of food that you touch, more than likely had to be pollinated by bee. And our community is growing towards becoming more sustainable. I think from the city perspective, we've covered all the, let's say, the cross the Ts and dot the Is of things that we need to do to get this through. But Casey, go ahead if you can elaborate a little bit.
Well, bees are awesome. I think we all know that. But I really wanted to point out that this designation would be extremely helpful for Salisbury. There is only one other city in Maryland that has this designation, and no one on the Delmar Peninsula has it yet. So not only would we be doing awesome things for the nature in our city, but we would really be standing out. And I think only 62 in the entire nation have this designation. So we would be far and above a lot of other neighborhood cities if we got this.
I know that there is, there's actually a crisis right now because of the number of bee colonies that have been, that have died. And it's kind of interesting, because it's certainly, from my perspective, knowing what I do about the bees, that our farmers depend on them immensely. And actually, a good friend of mine lost his colony this past year.
One of my friends, Victory Apary, it's in Somerset County, but he went from 50 hives and down to 11 just this winter. So it's kind of a big deal. And like Tony said, we're already taking a lot of the steps. It's just you allowing us to take a few more smaller ones and to apply.
Basically setting the goals to go forward and continue to keep that thing, process going.
So what steps? So we get this designation, what difference will I see?
So I guess in the short term, what you would see is, we're not going to be long, we're already not utilizing any pesticides as it is today, but in reduction in herbicide. So anywhere we have spray over and things like that, try to reduce the issues that we see, curbs and cracks and stuff like that, things that grow along that nature. If we're going to use anything, it'll be more bee-friendly. In promotion of that, we'd utilize more native species plants. For example, if we're going to do any more planted areas along the Riverwalk or something like that, most of those are already specified as native species. But we're already going to use those types of things to go forward, to keep promoting the knowledge and information development projects, keeping that aid of info. So we're no longer just, yeah, we're using a native plant, but it's not a pollinator. So now we'll start to implement those types of things to kind of promote growth, not just locally for our own infrastructure, but also in development.
In addition to that, hopefully, the city would also be an example for the citizens. So not only will you see more pollinators in the city parks, but then in neighborhoods so that when people have community gardens or their own gardens in their backyard, they'll have more vegetables. It'll just help everybody all around, and then hopefully also be an example to neighborhood or neighboring cities.
So we don't really have an agenda at this time. It's rather aspirational, we're going to get this. Because of the fact that very few cities have it, it's one of those things that cuts both ways, where it could mean that it's a very difficult thing to achieve, but it could also mean that it's titular in its nature, and there's no substance to it.
Well, I think also, when we do things like this, we have our sustainable certification from the city. And so we have to do things to maintain that with MML and the state of Maryland. So there are some, and that actually helps us get grants. So this is one more thing, if we're trying to get a grant for something, it's one more thing we put on our resume.
Yeah, to elaborate a step further, so in the short term, the reason why I said short term, in the two- to three-year range, we have a recertification for Maryland certified, Maryland Sustainable Certified. That certification process entails a series of sustainable steps. This being one of them is like a factor of, let's say, 20 or 30 points that we can get credit for of 150. So this one action will say, puts us that extra step closer to achieving our recertification level that we need to get to in the next three years. So there's an incentive to us behind the thing.
And you're working with, there's bee groups in the communities that you've been working with, that they have some educational opportunities and things like that for the public as well?
Yes, as well. So the zoo is already starting to put together their own week. There's a pollinator week that they do. I don't know how many people know about it. But they actually have an educational pamphlet and information that they put together so that if we wanted to, we could have a local group that already does volunteering for that type of informative week to go out into school public and try to touch base with the local schools in the area so that not only we're hitting the older group, but we're also hitting the younger group and knowledge base, trying to get everybody informed.
Just to summarize, what is the ask of the city?
So currently, the ask of the city is to potentially pass a resolution and enable us to become certified. We'll have to apply for this Bee City USA. And there's an application process of like $300, and that's about it.
The Green Team is going to-
We'll take that out of our budget.
Yep.
So, but you're going to be responsible for all the paperwork and everything else?
Correct.
So essentially, it's just a resolution you're looking for in support?
Correct.
Any other questions? Consensus? You got it?
I can't wait to hear good things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony and Casey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our own Mr. Rudacil.
Oh, I like that.
Now, we get to-
You just behave yourself.
Just let me know if he gets out of hand or not. Okay.
All right, I don't think I have audio on this presentation. We'll see. We'll see.
Hi, how are you doing today? What's your name? Where do you reside? Do you reside here? What's the name of the complex?
You can't hear it.
And how long have you been at Salisbury Commons? And how are the trash receptacles here? They don't always come in, I think that's a key thing to be keeping up with the paperwork. And trash is always everywhere. How is it that it's always like that? Today, I'm requesting for an ordinance to improve municipal solid waste management for multifamily housing communities. That woman lived in Salisbury Commons. And I ran into her this morning when I was going around taking a look at some of the trash receptacles in the multifamily units around the community. And I was asking her about trash collection there, and what she was saying is, they're always overflowing. They come about three times a week to pick it up, and the trash cans are always overflowing. What I'm asking is the support of the city council and an ordinance that would require that all waste carrels have at least three sides. All common community trash receptacles in multifamily housing communities must be housed within the walls of that corral. Cleanliness of the corral must be maintained. I don't have a number for this, but potentially an element that says where there are X number of units, a community should be compelled to make use of a dumpster instead of the bin and limit the number of waste bins permitted within a single community.
Go back to that last one.
I'll clarify what I mean by that.
I think I know what it means, but...
So, the rationale here is enhancing the, the goal is to enhance the quality of life of our residents, improve the cleanliness, the cleanliness of our communities, reduce the amount of litter being blown around our communities. So, one of the primary problems is inadequate capacity. I have several pictures here from different dates of what these trash receptacles can look like in our communities. And what you'll notice, if you look at the dates, these are a range of dates. So, on any given day, I could drive around Salisbury to these units, and you will find some that are in poor condition. So, they have inadequate capacity for these communities. There's also poor maintenance to these corrals. I believe this is Joanne Court. I took that on the 12, 12, 12, 17. You can see it's not well-kept, and it's typically in that condition. This is on Shiloh. There, they have a wall that's falling. That's, that's without even considering the potholes in their parking lots and everything else they have going on back there. But this sends a clear signal to people that reside in this city and the young people that live in these communities, that they, if this becomes a norm to them, then this will become what our city normally looks like. So, we could do this all day long. And this one is concerned, to me, this is on, this is on Moss Hill, the second one that I took today. This one is actually facing a main road. You know, I neglected to put it in the slide, but another thing we should ask is that they always be on the interior of the complex. This is facing a main road. And if you look at it, it's actually in poor condition. So, you know, the top is missing off of that one. And this is over on the west side of Salisbury. There's a mattress, I don't know how long the mattress has been there, I don't know how long the shopping cart's been there, but that bin is actually turned upside down. And I know that I took a picture there several months ago, and it was upside down.
They don't work that well when you have them upside down.
So... And, and when we have the corrals that don't have three sides, they get blown around by the wind. So, these are the bins that are in the community just south of, just south of Bennett High School, the university housing. They're all turned over to the side. This happened in my community back in 2017. A bin blew into a pond. And again, we have this one blown over, and it was full of trash, and the trash spilled out all over onto the walkway into the grassy area. And what also concerns me is we have several ponds in our community. This trash is blowing into the ponds. Once it blows into the ponds, then it's gonna make its way into our waterways. So ultimately, you'll see it in the Wycomica River at some point, and then the Chesapeake Bay. Again, this is the community that's just, and I forget what they call it, University Or, I don't wanna call it the wrong name, one that's south of Bennett High School.
Village, University Village.
University Village. So, if you look at this picture to the far right, there we have about nine trash cans. And the, the issue isn't just the nine, but if you go down that entire path, it's nothing but those trash bins. And it's also the same way on the front of the community. If you look at the first picture, you see they have a carrel right there, but they needed an extra trash can, so just put it wherever they could.
Now, let me ask a question on this one. Are each of the tenants required, are those tenants, or they're city? Their community?
Their community. They may or may not be city trash cans?
So, you've got, so you have, some have HOAs, you have some that are personal, you have...
But there's, there are so many sections of the code that, that Councilman Rudisil's hitting on right now that we could update and empower enforcement to, I don't wanna interrupt, but I mean, 48, 48 citations already written in the last six months on, just on multifamily trash cans. I mean, you know, enforcement's going gangbusters and can't, you know, can't, you know, it has to be a situation where it's designed right and then maintained right.
What I don't understand on the, because if something, development comes before the planning and zoning now, we make sure that the corrals are behind and enclosed.
Well, and I just saw...
Is that historical?
I just saw Amanda writing down, as, as Hardy made that point, that I don't know, I don't know the code well enough to tell you whether or not that has to be done or has been that way for how long, X number of years, but it's, it ought to be.
So, are you saying closed in or like three-sided?
On the interior, you know, you can, you're, you explained it right, on the interior of the development. So, let's say it's a multif, exactly. Keep it off the main road.
Yeah, okay, out of sight.
Yeah.
It's hard to jack, because there's so many of the older communities that do have HOAs and literally Carmen on, where's Susan, I thought Susan was here.
She's here.
Carmen will go and clean up Wycomica Village, and literally overnight, it's, it's six mat, it's almost as if somebody knows.
Oh, yeah.
When, when, when everything is clear and cleaned up, because when Carmen leaves there, the grass, the sidewalks, everything in Wycomica Village is, is on point. And literally the next morning, it is, it's $2,500, just like that from the association, just to, just to get the mattresses out of. And I know that's probably an enforcement issue on their end, but it does, it does seem as if a, a common practice is, if I don't have someplace to take somewhere big and I don't wanna pay, and I don't wanna go pick it up as, well, we'll just go find a dumpster somewhere.
Yeah, and that's just what a lot of people from the county do, instead of getting a dumpster sticker, a sticker for the, the dump. They'll take and bring their garbage to one of these facilities and dump it. And I've, I've watched them, I've even got tag numbers, and I've called the police and everything because I live in a community just as well as Hardy does. And you see him doing it quite often.
Moss Hill and Middle Neck get hit hard all the time, too. You got the Moss Hill picture. They get hit hard with the mattresses from outside of the city and from...
You just blew up my idea, because I was saying, rather than have nine of those little things, have a dumpster, but that'd be worse.
No, you need the dumpster. You need the dumpster. I would say go with the dumpster.
Make them do a commercial dumpster.
Make them X number, yeah.
That's my last slide.
Does anybody use that one? It looks, it looks like nobody uses it.
Here's the interesting thing. So, as I was saying, where I live, we have 54 units, and we have three of those dumpsters. And for the most part, they stay relatively neat. If you go into Pemberton Apartments, they use dumpsters. They stay relatively neat. You will have issues with people leaving furniture. It's not just people from the county, it's people that are moving, and they don't know what to do. Part of it is they don't know what to do, part of it is they don't want to do. But, you know, if we could empower people and let them know, this is how you manage bulky trash, that would be useful. But, you know, my primary concern is, I would like to see some ordinance that would compel some of these communities to move away from the big black bins and into dumpsters. Because if you have 20 of those bins lined up at the back of your community, clearly those bins are no longer sufficient. Or if those bins are overflowing, I would say, once every month, really, they're insufficient. And, and it's happening more often than that. And, and then just basic things. That corral issue, there needs to be a three-sided corral, and those bins need to be within that corral because it, it is really impacting people's experience here in the city. And what's worse is when it's, it's the city that's providing the service, maybe everyone's not eligible for city service just based on their sheer size. If the city's not interested in diversifying our fleet that collects trash in order to provide dumpsters, then maybe your HOA needs to pay a little bit extra. I spoke to a homeowner in the townhomes, and he said he wrote his HOA and said he's willing to pay more, but he hasn't gotten a response from them, and he's the only owner that lives within that complex. So, there's sort of an, an area where we're closely regulating individuals that are renting homes to people that live in single-family communities, but when we have these rental communities, we're overlooking the things that those people are being forced indoor. And we have to address it. And I'm not saying that I have the answer, I'd just like to have a conversation about it, and I'd like to see the city compel some change in that area.
I agree.
I, I think it's a good start. I think, I certainly see a problem, so I think we all agree that there is.
I've come to believe, too, that, that a lot of the litter and floatables that we see, if you look at the sourcing, I mean, it's not as if everybody littered right in the spot you see it. You know, it's collecting, you know, based on, you know, gathering an area. And I've come to believe that it's, a lot of it is these enclosures that are insufficient or the, or broken cans, the large cans being broken. One thought that I had, because I think there's, I think there's clearly a legislative response needed, and, and there's probably additional enforcement and education things that we can do. We've got in the room right now, we've got Susan Phillips, Amanda Pollack, we've got Ben Baker, and we've got Ron Arrie. Ron is the new superintendent of sanitation for the city and, you know, has just come on board in the last two months.
Welcome.
By the way, is going gangbusters over there. But, yeah, I wonder if we can't build a little task force that is target, is tasked with coming up with both legislative and enforcement and public education fixes? And, you know, given, hey, within the next like 60 to 90 days, come up with solutions and present them and start implementing.
I think I'll, we should assign Mr. Rudisil. Now, I think it makes sense, and I think that's the proper way to approach.
Build a little team focused on solutions.
I'm all for it, you know, I've been concerned about this for a while, and I just want to see some sort of movement in this area.
Well, I think you've got agreement from the council that we need to do something in the mayor's office. You have an agreement, so...
I'm gonna walk to the other side of the table and agree with myself.
Ron, did you wanna, did you wanna say something?
Yeah. Prior to coming to the city, I worked for that company that, that owns that container right there. And it looks nice and pretty, as of right now, it looks nice and pretty, but I've already seen what happens when you have three or four of those lined up. The same thing happens as when you have our 300-gallon black containers. So, it's not always gonna look like that. I think the only thing, what you don't see in those pictures where those black cans are, is anybody recycling. If they were to recycle, you could cut those nine cans down to four or five.
Good point.
Could also cut the cost to that multi-dwelling unit, too, because we wouldn't have to pick them up as often. Okay, at home, I have Blue Hen, I live in Delaware. I've got a 95 gallon for trash, a 95 gallon for recycle. I have more recycle than I have trash. They could really come every two weeks for my trash and once a week for my recycle. It's the opposite way right now, but I think a short-term, maybe long-term solution to that is more recycling. And I thought that multi-unit dwellings and all were supposed to enforce recycling for their occupants. If they did, they wouldn't have that problem. You're still gonna have a mess because we can't train people to throw trash in a can, as simple as it may sound. They don't do it, they just walk out and over the fence, and that's how it works, so. I just wanted to put my two cents where it's, and that's all.
Thank you. Okay, I think the consensus is that we'll support the mayor's task force and...
I agree with Mr. Rudisil.
I think you're out of order, but that's okay. All right. Good, a good discussion. I think it's a good start, and I think that obviously it's gonna help the city, the appearance of the city and the citizens, so. Good. Thank you, Mr. Rudisil, for bringing that up. Next up, problematic properties, which sounds better than chronic nuisance. So, Susan, come on up. And I know we have three speakers that would like to speak when Susan's done before we go forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Good afternoon, thank you. All right, so I think we have a really good version this time. We have, as you know, this, this version, well, not this version, but this legislation's been back several times. And we have now changed it to that the mechanism that would cause this property to be in the threshold for problematic properties would be here, 1527, 115 qualifying events. And that would be, A, for the calls for service from the police department, which that really wasn't the issue that we were bouncing around, it was B, calls for service. So, that's what has been changed. A call for service with regard to HCCD resulting in the issuance of a municipal citation for or a violation requiring abatement by the city. So, I know that there was a question that was emailed out last week wanting clarification for call for service. So, the definition for call for service was just that, that was just defining a call for service, but what, what would qualify the event is a call for service to housing community development that resulted in the issuance of a municipal infraction or a violation requiring abatement by the city. So, just for instance, if there's a broken window that was not repaired, a fine is issued or rubbish that was not cleaned, and we had to perform a clean and lean. So, that's just an example of one of the two that would be a qualifying event. And if those two things happen on the, at the same time, that would only be one, it would not be two.
Could we, could we just, could I just interrupt for one second?
Sure.
Because I'm sensitive to this. In, in the exclu, in the exclusions?
Yes.
It has one thing called a mental subject?
Yeah.
Could you please find a term that is acceptable?
Yeah, Mark, I'm not sure why that was highlighted either.
I would have highlighted it, but...
Well, I, I think that, that language initially came from the chief, and it, what it was, is it's some kind of federal reporting thing she just answered in an email recently. But I, I thought that, you know, mentally disturbed or challenged subject might be a better way of describing that, because that's exactly what we're trying to capture.
That would be much better.
Since the issue came out.
There is actually a definition.
Yeah, that's...
There is a definition from...
And I, I think they have a ten-code for that. That's what they're, that's, that's what the ten-code says.
Code, and you're right, that's what they say.
That's what that's...
Maybe we should change the ten-code. But I just, that's, just, just, it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal to some...
So, that's, that's an exclusion, so that would not be counted.
Right. And it will, it will be in the legislation, so I'd just like to have it...
Yeah, we, we definitely wanna, I was wondering why that was highlighted and stuck out like that, too, so...
We can move on.
I agree completely with the changing of the language and to make it not a call for service. But in the real world, neighborhoods that do deal with this particular issue, if there's a call for service, and they have the men, and the person has been, had to be petitioned that the police have to come, I believe that, that should be noted on the property. If they gotta come get Hardy because he's dumping mattresses back behind, then we don't count it as one for doing, if it is, if it is a... I prefer not to, in open session, go into exact examples.
I wonder, I wonder if.
Is there a better way to say that?
No, you're, you're saying it right. I, I, I want. I, I wonder if it's, I wonder if it's, if that's the only reason, you see what I'm saying? If it's not like a, a noise disturbance or a, an assault or, uh, I wonder if, because I, I imagine, and Chief isn't here, but I imagine that is a call. There, like you said, there's.
It's a ten code for that, yes.
But.
I mean, with all the hundreds of them that they have.
The person who.
And I'm sure she's.
You gotta be careful.
But I, but I will say this, when you live on a street and the cops are coming repeatedly to the same place where people are getting petitioned. I'm gonna tell you that affects the quality of life on the street.
And that's what I said about the overdose.
I was gonna say, the other one in that paragraph was the overdose as well. A lot of these things don't have anything to do with anything illegal, but I, I'm assuming you can't overdose from anything that isn't illegal.
I'm thinking, this is. I mean, this is the problem that we're, we're running into when we're trying to ding a property for responses from two different departments in the city. And they have two completely different functions. And, and, and I think this is the problem that we're running into because, you know, there's certain things that we need to exclude. But it's, it, this is, this is, this is what is resulting in this. We have, you know, we have, we have language that pops up in like this that, you know, I don't like it, but I understand why it's in there. Because that's how the police department reports that type of call.
Well, let me ask you this. How many times does a person have to come to a dwelling for overdose and, and it becomes a problem or a violation? Or a cited?
And if, if the property owner really wants to know what's going on at the property, some of these aren't necessary, but warrants. If I own the property next door, I'm gonna wanna know that a warrant has been issued at the property. There's a problem in a neighborhood is not just gunshots. It's constant, 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 constant at the same places over and over and over again. And we know when we look at the calls for service, you know, someone will say, well, that was just, that's just a routine patrol check. That's a good thing. Well, that's, that's come off. But some of these things are, are not just routine patrol checks, so. And, and I've been, I'm, I'm gonna lie to you, I've been on the phone with Barbara Duncan and, well, why not this one? So we walked through a scenario, you know, she got me, she got me on board with domestic assault where three people won't call if they know that it's, it's gonna count against them. I didn't agree with her, I don't agree with her now, but it's one of those that I will go, okay, leave it in there. I won't argue with that, with you about that one. But there are others in there that, and if she's not here to, she could agree with Hardy.
I think, I think specifically the one that I'm, I'm looking at is a person with a mental disability. And I, and now I'm gonna take both sides. I'll speak for, I'll speak for the Realtor. You can't deny somebody who has a mental illness to rent a place. Because otherwise, he's gonna get in trouble or the Realtor will get in trouble. So it's a fine line. I understand you a hundred percent.
Well, we've been dealing with the issue of the recourse in the neighborhood that the rest of us have.
Right.
With so many houses that are now plugged into a federally protected. And, you know, when someone comes to buy a house, they wanna know why there are all these calls for services to this house. You can't, there's not, there, the answer is, there's nothing we can do about it.
And, and, you know, here's another one. Somebody is a tier-three sex offender. And they go to rent a house. I mean, you know, really, you can't. They're registered, they have to put a sign out in their yard. But you can't deny somebody to, a place to live. Because then if we don't give them a place to live, where are they gonna be? I mean, that's the, you know, so there, there's so many things that.
Well, it's an embarrassment and they should be embarrassed, but that doesn't necessarily mean there's a call for service because that house, that, that is on the front of the house.
But I mean, it's, it's, there's, there's no.
Our solicitor would like to make a comment.
We, we might be able to draw the line at literally mental competence. So if, if we're talking about someone who is, could not be held responsible for their actions due to mental incompetence. That that may be what we want to exclude versus just someone who has an anger or personality disorder who takes it out on their neighbors.
I, I think that Jim's point is that it's not, it's not the person. How can I say this? It's not the person with the problem, it's the impact because of multiple calls to the same place on the rest of the individuals surrounding that pro- that person. It's a very, I mean, this is, that one in particular. Anything where you have, um, a group, a person or a group that is federally protected. You have an issue and, and I'm not sure if we can solve that here. I think, you know, we, we talked about, if you remember, we spent a lot of time talking about a lot of it is gonna be up to the police and the way they write it up based on common sense. Now that's, you know.
I'm, I'm not sure if I'm understanding the concern or, and we're talking about mental subjects. So an individual, as I understand it, that has some, some compromised capacity.
Right.
They're protected from discrimination as to that compromised capacity, but if they have engaging conduct that's disruptive, that's treated differently. They aren't necessarily protected as far as, so if I'm throwing a bunch of mattresses in my backyard. That's a separate issue than my lack of capacity. So I will be dinged for the mattresses in the backyard. But, and, but then it gets back to Mr. Bodas' point. People have to live someplace where stuck with each other and we're all.
And the denser the population is, the closer we all together, we live in a city. Unfortunately, it's, you know, that's, it's, it's kinda like family. You can't always choose your neighbors, well, you can, but, you know, I mean, that's, I'm not saying it in a, in a negative fashion. But I mean, you know, it's, these are the problems that, you know, from denser populations that you run into. I mean, we're not, you know, hey, we're not New York City where we got a hundred and fifteen floors of people stacked on top of each other. So I mean, and, and those issues are, you know.
The, so the intent, the intent of the, the legislation is to reduce the externalities from any property on neighbors. And, and for bad actors who are unwilling to do anything about it, to limit those. And to ultimately get everyone to behave, you know, as neighborly as possible when we're managing a property or, um, or occupying one. So I think if, if as, even if mental subject was still excluded, so long as any of those other behavioral issues, you know, assault. Throwing mattresses in the street, whatever it may be, as long as those are still included, that the externalities, the major ones would be addressed. And there may still be times when something gets coded that way and it's a nuisance to the neighborhood. I don't know.
And I don't think there's any.
It's not perfect, it's not a perfect answer.
Yeah, and I don't think there is a perfect legislation for this. You could, you could not come up with enough, you know, ifs.
But that's the point of the human evaluation.
Right, that's what, that's my point about the police coming.
If the goal.
But then it goes before the board.
Yeah.
Well, and then it's just gonna be turned over anyway, so.
That's not always true. I've been on that board, you've been on that board. It doesn't always get turned over. I know you have Mary.
The easy ones don't get turned over. My question is, is if the goal is to do two, in my head, the goal is to do two things. To be able to get the numbers of exactly where we're going to the same places, so we can address it. But to me, the goal is also to let the property owner know or become more interested in what is going on at their property. Because we're doing the babysitting for them. It's, it's that clear. So when you have in Mykamica Village, the same call to the same house hundreds of times. That's, that, that there's, that, that you can say to the people who own it that are, don't live here, live in another street. You have to do something about this because, and, and I, I've always thought if you could give them the ability to know or to check. And if they didn't and it was still going on, then we know we even have a bigger problem with, with that particular property. And it's up because on that particular street, the same thing that's happened hundreds of times outside of seven twenty-five is now happening outside of seven, you know, seven fifteen. Because it's just moving down the street. So I, the overdose one is, is, is the only really one in here. And I don't know whether or not the, the, um, warrant or the surveying of papers should also.
Well, that could be divorce papers too, so.
An overdose is a health condition that's a byproduct of drug use, which is also a public health issue.
But don't there have to be drugs in the house for your overdose?
Sure, but so those people that can keep the drugs and manage not to overdose are comfortable with. But those that happen across a bad batch, we might say, well, you know, this is a ding against you. I, I just think we're losing too many people to, to even engage in anything that would disincentivize people seeking immediate assistance when we're dealing with, with an overdose. I just don't think that it would be.
Well, I want law enforcement and the neighbors to know there's drugs in the house.
If there's.
But I agree with you too.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying and, and if there, I'm, again, the overdose is one thing, but if there's anything that the police can tease out while they're there. That's another conversation and that's addressed separately from the overdose itself. I don't know if the overdose creates sort of this blanket.
That's SOP.
This is a drug den and we happen to have an overdose and the cops come in and they just let everything ride.
Time to clean it up.
One other option, Mr. President, is, is we, we could, if we wanna have that exclusion be limited to helping people. We could actually exclude a call for assistance with a mentally disturbed or challenged individual. In other words, but you're really, if, if someone's mother calls because her son is having a breakdown and the police need to take him in to the hospital. We may not wanna include that, but if her son were to injure or assault someone, as was pointed out by Mr. Rudesil, that might be exactly what we do wanna cover.
And, and that, I, I think that goes back to what I'm try, what I try to say when there's gotta be some common sense approach by the officers on how they're gonna handle it. I mean, you gotta, at some point in time, the human's gonna make the decision. And, and I, I would, I have faith in our officers, I do, I'll tell you. And especially when it comes to a person with a mental illness or a person that's had an overdose. I've seen him in action. Same with the fire service. I've seen how they, how they work. So I, like I said, I don't think we can make a perfect one, but I think that, that, that ability of the officer in charge to say, and you're right. Jim, I don't know if it was Jim that said it, that a person who, who's, you know, broke a glass and is throwing glass inside the house is different than if he smacks the first guy he sees in the head and knocks him down and gives him a concussion. I mean, that, you have to differentiate these things and I think that that's why the police are trained and the fire are trained the way they are. So, um, I didn't mean to bring this whole, this, but I think it's a good discussion to have. But, um, can I suggest we go, we move forward until, see what the other pieces of this are and then come back and see if we have consensus at the end? Is that all right? Okay, and then we'll hear from, uh, the people that wanna speak also before we talk about it. I'm just, go right ahead.
And they honestly were the only other, that was the only change that we made was addressing the calls, qualifying calls for service. Did anyone have any questions?
No, I, I don't have mine, you answered mine. If there's no other questions, uh, let's have the first speaker, and I'm not sure I got these in the right order, but we're, you're all gonna get heard, so. Uh, I believe that Brett was the first one. Brett, you, you wanna come up?
Brett Hopkins, Fairfax Station Enterprises at nine twenty-five Eastern Shore Drive. I just wanna say thank you for working with us to get this legislation to where it is. I think it's probably as good as, as it's gonna be and much better than it was and acceptable to us in general. I'd like to ask about the quick turnaround letters that, uh, where they're mailed out the day that basically that the action is supposed to be due. That can happen a lot, so it'd be nice if somehow there could be a delay in the time that, that the, uh, the letters go out to when they're actually due on some of these major things like, um, I'm trying to think of one that's a quick turnaround. I can't think of one right now, but a lot of times we'll actually get the letter a day or two after the due date.
Abandoned property?
Yeah, it could be one of those kinds of letters. Yeah, and it, and it's like, there's no way to, you can't satisfy this. And so it could, it could trigger a citation.
Can you call me tomorrow about that?
Mayor, if we could get that standardized PD list, you and I exchanged an email too about that. Because we have an initiative, initiative in Sapoa where we can scrub that list using an automated web crawler and then blast out to our membership that you're on the PD list, you gotta call, you need to go to this house because it's on the list. They're getting PD calls.
Remind me.
Uh, the problem is, is the, the list that comes out, the PD call list, is not standardized. It changes weekly. And so we can't automate a tool to run down that list using a web crawler and then notify our membership that your house is on this list.
The calls for service list?
Yeah.
Okay.
It changes, it's not standardized. I mean, it literally has to be the same every week. It's five columns wide, the first column is address, the second column is, is street name.
Runs searches.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna run a web crawler and we've tried it, but the list changes every week. I mean, just a little bit, it can't change at all.
So it's a format, not a content.
Well, yeah, the only challenge with that is we stopped last year, um, you know, late two thousand seventeen, doing the written list and went to crimereports.com where we upload it and it's all geographic. So you can actually like zoom in and click on it and find out information about that call and it's like weekly updated.
So you think it is standardized?
Well, I don't know, um, but we can work on, I, I assume that data is also in a spreadsheet format somehow.
As long as it's standardized and we can access it, then we can handle the technology part.
Okay. Let me ask the chief.
Oh, on the, on the trash bins, going back there real quick since I'm, if we could be engaged with you on that, be part of the list. Because, you know, we own a lot of those kinds of communities.
I think it'd be an excellent thing to have somebody on the task force like Brett.
Not every community, like we own Tide Mill, that one has everything you're looking for and is well managed. And I don't wanna see us to have to put dumpsters in there, because we've had dumpsters and they're a nightmare. We have what you're looking for and so I don't wanna see us get caught up in that net.
What made the dumpsters a nightmare?
Uh, they break up your asphalt, the trucks come in and they bounce and they create terrible asphalt situation. The road, the roadways go away, uh, they're a huge gravitational item. Everyone, for some reason, can't throw, can't lift the, slide the door or lift the top and throw a thing in, so they just throw it out in front. And it becomes a nightmare and, and we have them in Baltimore at our other communities. And I wish we could go to what we have like a Tide Mill, which is pictures you, some of the pictures you showed, you didn't show Tide Mill, but.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, but, uh, they're huge gravitational items and people just see them and think that it's an open error.
I, I'll, I'll drive through Tide Mill tonight, but you know, in my experience, people, there's just as much disincentive to put trash in the bins as there is the dumpster, if, if any at all, so.
Yeah. I mean, we'll work on, I mean, I'm, I'm, say we'll participate with you, but I don't just want this whole, this fishing net to catch everybody when not everyone needs to be caught. I think that's it.
Okay, thanks Brett. Next up is Lynn Bratton. Good evening, Lynn.
I haven't been here lately. Lynn Bratton.
We missed you.
I know, downstairs even the guy says you're back. Lynn Bratton, three oh three South Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. A city resident for many, many years and also a property owner for rental properties. Going back to the, the leadership style of the Covey principles, I do wanna reiterate the appreciation for thinking win-win. Thinking first to be understood, then to understand, or thinking first to understand and then be understood. Because I think that's what has happened here. Uh, we came with, there was a plan. We came with, there was a plan and we shared some information and there was a dialogue and there was understanding and I do think what we have now is going to provide a much more sustainable win-win. And I think it's going to be something that can be managed and not be that, that bookkeeping nightmare that I was trying to describe with all the exclusions of this and that and this and that. If somebody doesn't do what they're supposed to do and they get a citation, by golly, that's night, bad, okay? So let's not do that. But again, I have to talk with Brett a little bit about that turnaround. There are times when you get the letter and it's like two days later and you've got to get this done or the, the abandoned property situation. So I think it's a win-win. I do want to just make sure I understand what you were saying, Susan, at the beginning. That very first part of definitions just said, call for service would be these things, including a police call of any kind. And then the triggering events is described in that next section. And then that says, these are going to be the triggering events for the housing department and these would be the triggering events with the exclusions for the police department. My, okay, that's what I, that's what I thought I heard you say and I understand that that process would be clarification for me. There was one other spot in the ordinance somewhere where there's a capital W that like makes it look like you have a new sentence and then you don't have any, it's like that's just a phrase. I think it should be a small W, I put it in the writing to you guys, just again, I think it's just a wording where you just needed a comma or to make the capital W a lowercase w. And if you look at the memo I sent, I can't tell you right this minute where that was, but I think it's just editing. I think it's just an editorial grammar situation. So thank you very much.
Thank you Lynn. Last up is Riley Smith.
First of all, let me make it clear that I have no economic benefit from rental property. I'm just a citizen. Matter of fact, I subsidize a lot of the rental industry because I'm a single family homeowner and I make no income from water, sewer, taxes, whatever. I cannot deduct my taxes as a reduction of my income with regards to paying income tax. So there's a little grant there in your terminology. I'd like to thank Mr. Ironton for his observations on living in the environment of the city of Salisbury, allotted as similar to my experiences. But I do have a question on the levels of starting with call for service and then it goes to corrective action letter or municipal citation. I know what a corrective action letter is, I think. Is that the one they stick on the door? Okay. What is a municipal citation?
A fine.
If they don't comply with the corrective action? Okay. Where do you, in what system do you merge the complaints from the city police and your property complaints into one bunch to count the number of cumulative violations?
We merge the two into a database. It's a database through IT.
Okay, so you are doing that?
Yes.
Okay, good. And as far as the trash bins, I've seen both. I've seen good gigantic bins and I've seen good individual containers, but I've also seen horrible individual containers. They tend to, to live in a family and there's, I know there's a place on Camden Avenue, which is an old big house, but, and they have a parking, they have parking in the back, but they put the containers right out on Camden Avenue, like eight of them, I guess because they can't walk, they can walk back to their car, but can't walk back to put the trash in the containers behind the residents. And as far as the delineation between criminal activity and property violations, I have a, and this has nothing to do with, you know, mental incompetence, drug abuse, whatever. It has to do with the payment of my taxes to support an individual, which I'm not going to mention, but who has acquired, and I've been watching him for a year. They have acquired six shopping carts, which you may think is funny, but they are three hundred dollars apiece. And you bought a girl to the grocery store and asked them.
I walked out of my home and there were been shopping carts in the middle of the intersection. It's, it's one of the first conversations I had with, with Mayor Day here when we were first getting acquainted.
Yeah, well, they were all over Salisbury there for a while, it was ridiculous. But I, I don't want to get into the details of the shopping carts. My question is, they also have beer cans in the backyard. How is that called in? Because one of them, at least in most states, stealing four or five shopping carts or using them is a felony. So what do I do? Do I call the police and you, or do I call you?
It's not going to be considered a felony here. I've talked, I've gone to all the grocery stores here and talked to them. I won't say which, but there's a grocery store that actually encourages it to some of their, their customers because, to the customers that don't have any form of transportation because it encourages them to shop there. So I've been going through this for years. The inspectors will actually pick them up when they see them on a sidewalk somewhere and take them back to the store just because they're unsightly and try to get, you know, get them taken care of. We rate them up as rubbish all the time. We'll see them parked in some brush somewhere, we pick them up, we take them back. We've been, they're, they're a hassle for us. So I've written letters to all the grocery stores saying, please police your grocery carts. They ignore me. So we've explored legislation for them, we're currently exploring legislation for them, what we can do. So we're, we're sick of it too.
What amazes me is it started out with one, now it's up to like five. Why do you need five if, if you're just helping this guy out?
They go to the grocery store and each time they come home, they bring home another one and they just collect them in the yard.
So you suggest that I call you when it's on this certain example?
We have a whole bunch of rubbish letters right now for grocery carts in the yards, but if you see them, just call. I mean, most likely we have it right now, but if we miss some, feel free call.
On that property, that may be a situation where you want both, where you want PD to come with you. I mean, clearly somebody's doing, somebody's got a plan.
And a car that runs. And a, and a very nice limp, got that down pat. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Are we up for consensus?
Okay. Good. Next on the agenda, purchase of four oh one Church Street.
Yes, this is property on the corner of Church and Route thirteen. I think we're all familiar with this property. It's owned by Thang Tran. This property has, it's been vacant for a minimum of three years, but a little bit longer than that and it has been riddled with code enforcement violations for quite some time. One, two, three, four, five. So recent, Mr. Tran has owned it since two thousand sixteen. Prior to that, his father owned it since two thousand and ten. Mr. Kim. So, and that was just the one on the corner that was the, known as the textile store.
It was actually known by many things before it was that.
Well, yes, most recen, most recently.
Property, Mr. Weisner owned it for years. It was a tailor shop that the Hazel family was involved with and my sister was a tailor in there for many, many, many years before it became, you know, what it became.
Well, you would be sad to walk into it right now.
Sure. Can I ask you a question as to why we're not, if it's vacant and code violation is why we're not pursuing receivership instead of purchasing it?
The structure, there is no value to the structure whatsoever. It is, the inside is falling within itself and it's, it has severe mold, probably the most severe case I've ever seen. When I walked in the door, I couldn't breathe, I had to step back.
I apologize, but that really doesn't answer my question.
I'm sorry.
Why would, why wouldn't we just do receivership and then tear it down instead of asking for thirteen thousand dollars to buy it? Because that's sort of a different precedent.
To, to go through with receivership would cost us probably about five, six thousand dollars. So, and then to tear it down, if we, if we got it receivership and then tore it down, it's going to cost us about ten more on top of that, so it'd be more expensive actually.
So it's thirteen plus ten?
Well, depending on what we do, if Public Works, I think that they're going to be able to take it down, so depending on what route we take to demo it, if Public Works can do it.
There's a couple of factors. One is time, whether or not, and then the second is whether or not they will, you know, sell it before we can get our hands around it through the receivership process. So trying, trying to get it quickly is a part of it.
Yeah.
Trying to make sure we can.
Someone.
I agree that you should go and get it, but if, if it's an issue of timeliness, I can give you about fifty other properties throughout the city that could have been timely for decades.
That's what we've been trying to do, we've been trying to buy.
If we wanted receivership with this, he could or someone else could come to court and try to be a receiver of it and could try to do something else with it. We have had him in court for, I don't know, the past year trying to get him to fix the violations on the structure and he has, trying to find the right word without using the word. Right, trying, I don't want to say what I really want to say. So because he is not.
Isn't this a job for the commercial section of Sapporo? I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking out loud if this is, that, that's not, that's not for you, I apologize.
Because he has not fixed it, it, the, all the elements, whether it has come inside and it is, it's horrible.
I just add that another, you know, the intent here, if approved and if we use CDI money for it, the intent is to return it to private ownership. That's, that's the idea, even if it's a vacant lot.
Well, that was, that was my next question.
And that's a prime spot.
Well, actually it's not for Salisbury, because if it were a prime spot, Mr. Fan probably would have done something with it. Salisbury, you have to walk thirty-five feet from that door to back where you can park and that's not something we like to do. We know this about it. My question for you would be, if we're going to spend that money, this is a perfect place for wakeboarding. This is a perfect place for East Salisbury, East Salisbury School, this is a perfect place for Points North, this is a perfect place for the Chippin Cultural Center. Look that way. This is a, you know, because this is not in the Church Street Historic District, that's not till the next block, correct?
Could point, could point that way though.
It could, you know, I mean, there is because what it was after, the good, the, the people had it that were doing, the nice shop that was there much later, that's, you know, there, there were three in your travels, you know, over ten.
On the bin.
The bin. It would seem to me that this, that if that's the only thing that worked there at that time, I, I'm not sure what, what new comes to it, but that's, that's for later, that's for when we do it. I just, I had a concern about the precedent of spending the money when we certainly have a bunch of others that could certainly be on. And maybe to the commercial, this is a perfect property, but to the residential person, there's one down the street that's a perfect property as well, so I'm, I just don't know whether or not that precedent is a good.
The land is, we, we're purchasing it under value and the, it's actually, the, the lot, the structure itself is bringing the value down, so it's going to be worth more once we get it, get it down.
You've identified, Jim, that the, the best use of it is some, is not another building on that site. And it is one of, in terms of, you know, prioritizing where we do actually, you know, spend cash on a, a project, it's in one of the three focus neighborhoods, you know, for the neighborhood revitalization plan. So I could see, you know, obviously there are a lot of high priorities.
Is it connected, does anyone know what the connections like to the building?
It's tied into it, it's not, it's not, the whole wall is not connected, it just has some tie-ins.
And if there's an opportunity to even use the exterior of the next building as part of like the beautification, you could really have a nice gateway.
We're, we're going to start to have problems if something isn't done as far as one wall, the, the west wall of it's starting to collapse if something is not done. And we're not getting Mr. Tran to do anything without us having to spend money to do it for him. And if we're going to spend money, we might as well have it for ourselves. It's frustrating right now.
It's just hard to know that, hear it again out loud, that we have somebody out there that you can't get to do what they're supposed to do and we are going to.
That's, that's why.
There's several ways you can describe spending the money to get it. It could be, it could be the minimizing of late, it could be bailing somebody out. I'll let you know in an hour or two exactly where I come down on how I feel about spending money for somebody who even the director of the department says you can't get to do it.
Well, we have those, you know, we have those people. But it's best for us, if we're going to, to have this on our tax rolls.
Okay. Consensus, any other questions? Consensus? Consensus, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. You're on there.
Oh, I'm on there?
Lot thirty.
Okay, well, we're not on, yeah. Okay, lot thirty. As discussed, the disposition contract has been edited and was agreed to by the, the partner, Green Street Housing LLC. And it essentially requires that they either do the original plan of housing, we left all of that in, or a hotel project consisting of four to ten floors. So they, they have the option, instead of eliminating and just replacing it with the hotel, we, we left both in, but we've, you know, we've kept that aggressive timeline in there. So they're now within, I think, eighteen months of having to break ground. Their timeline remains fairly aggressive.
How much did they originally purchase it from us for?
I don't remember and I don't have the, do you have?
I just have some concerns with, it was supposed to be affordable housing and now the option of the hotels there. If I knew the option for hotel was there, I may have asked them to pay a little more for it at the time.
That I don't know. It was supposed to be a mix of affordable and market rate housing, but.
But that's why you did lots cheap.
Although we've done it for hotels and retail and other things too. Yeah, I'm not sure.
So this is a change?
Yes.
It's giving them another option of what they might be allowed to do with it?
Well, it's not their, I think it was because of the.
And, and, yeah, as we discussed, it was discussed in closed session, but the, the only reason why they can't do it now is because the state has entered into a settlement, was it a settlement?
It's a mediation agreement?
Yeah, the only type of those properties now are going to be pretty much in Baltimore.
So affordable housing funding elsewhere in the state is going to be limited because the state entered into some sort of agreement for violating federal fair housing act, that act that you love so much. Yeah, the, the state apparently violated federal fair housing law and so entered into an agreement and it's focused on the Baltimore area, which drew all of those resources that were getting distributed elsewhere around the state.
Somewhere out there, correct. So if they do do the hotel. So if they do do the hotel, will they still have to have room for farmers market, will they still have to?
So they'll have to do some sort of ground floor, the same language. It's like a market consisting of local farmers and artisans, a restaurant, retail space, theater, or other uses. And it, it requires it to come back to me, um, and so we'll have to approve it. So they can't just do it without discussion.
Any other questions? Okay, we have consensus to approve.
And any other negotiations we'll bring back to council if there are.
Okay. Okay, we have consensus. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, everybody. Mr. Corridory. Mr. Mayor. We'll call the troops up as necessary. Yeah, I don't think we can handle all you at the same time. I had sent out a memo today, I don't know, or an email today, just as concerning the bond debt. I know we're going to discuss that in depth and, and I got some information, but I think, I think we should hear where we are relative to, because I looked, we all looked at the CIP.
Okay.
And just a, just a thing, and the explanation actually that you gave was fine, so, to me. So go ahead, you want to cover that just real quick in summary, or the mayor, either one.
Go ahead. Yeah, so I saw the email, I thought it was also about the unassigned fund balance, so I brought that too.
Okay.
So you could pass this out. This just shows a quick visual, we, we look at this every year.
Yep.
When we digest the financial health. And so we have, we have the chart that presents three levels, two months, three months, four months. We can see three months would be an unassigned fund balance of approximately nine point seven million and two months would be approximately six point four million. At the end of FY sixteen, we were at seven point five million for unassigned fund balance. At the end of the FY seventeen, we were at six point seven million. So we had a drop of eight hundred thousand. And so up at the top right hand corner, there's a little box that shows some of the uses in FY seventeen. We had the firefighter ordinance of a hundred and sixteen, the radios of six hundred and sixteen, miscellaneous ordinances. And we had a healthcare settlement that the rebate was a little less than previous. So that in combination with some revenue variances and whatnot resulted in a net of about eight hundred thousand. So that's just a quick review of our unassigned fund balance.
Well, is that a, the sky is falling analysis? Is that a, this is okay analysis? You put in the GFLOA, my favorite people on the entire planet, at six point four and now we have six point seven. So is that saying that it's okay or does Barbara Keane Thornton have to be here to listen?
Well, generally, we said in good times, we like to be above that three, you know, at the three month line or above in that quadrant. And, and, and so if we stayed there in good times, if we had some bad times, we'd have some room to fall into the lower quadrant.
From a FY nineteen budget standpoint, Jim, to answer that question, I think what it tells us is that, and the CIP assumes this, that I think we want to build it back up a little bit. You know, we're not far off, but I, you know, I think with a few tweaks to how we buy, mostly capital, because that's, that's the big chunk that is, we can change pretty quickly without having to change major things about how many employees we have, you know, how much energy costs, things like that. You know, if we change how we, how we buy our, our capital, I think we can, um, we can respond to that over the course of the next two to three years and ensure that it's back above that three month line. I think that's where we want to be. I wouldn't go much higher than that because then you start to get into the territory of, why are you, why are you taxing me and sitting on my money?
No, I think, I think we, we should be at the three million line and, or slightly below. And I had stated my concern about that last year and actually the year before.
Three months.
Um, and I think that based on what I, what I, what I saw in the CIP, I think we're starting to address the issue.
Yeah.
And that's going to come up again, obviously, when we do the budget because I think we need to, to make sure that that trend line turns. And I think the lease thing will help.
Until the big- No more. Go ahead.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. So, um, the FY twenty nineteen, FY twenty twenty-three CIP, it, uh, it is similar to the FY eighteen, twenty twenty-two in that it advances the implementation of a lot of our plans that we've adopted or that the council has adopted in the last few years. It, that includes the Urban Greenway Plan, the Downtown Master Plan, our Bike Master Plan. You know, it continues to implement those projects. It, it presents them a little differently in that rather than breaking them out year by year as different projects, it breaks them out year by year as different years of the same project. But it, it continues that process. Also continues to, um, to try to just tighten down on our capital projections to make it close to what we can actually afford each year. So you'll see, this, this is, I think, the second lowest, the second smallest CIP. Julia, that's not advancing. Give me one second, I'm going to-
While you're doing that, the one thing that I, I liked, the little summaries on the top of the sheets in each of the departments was very helpful. It answered probably two thirds of the questions I had, uh, which, and it was just enough detail so that it eliminated a lot of my questions. But I like that, the format is very, very easy to read. I don't know if anybody else found that, but-
So includes the, uh, the language that we always put in about what capital planning is, how we plan, what's required by our charter to be included and what's not. And then I'll take you to the summary and we can just go department by department after that. So for the general fund, year one is a larger year. You know, FY nineteen is a larger year because it includes the second and third phases of the, or, you know, technically the first and third phases of the Main Street Master Plan. Yeah, uh, second and third phases of the Main Street Master Plan. The, uh, the ensuing years try to remain at a, a, a pretty tight average of what we expect to expend on capital each year and, and do even more so to be pretty much exact as far as what we're going to spend in, in cash versus what we're going to spend in lease proceeds and in debt, or lease payments and in debt. Rather than go page by page and source by source, why don't we get to each project? This year, we, we don't have anything, any further expense right now for the City Hall space study. We're, we have the architect engaged right now for City Hall programming and they have produced a program for us. So now we, that's something we probably want to bring to you and we can discuss ways to proceed. But we have a program, a space programming, that includes everything that is either currently in the Government Office Building, Housing and Community Development, and Information Services. It's a very detailed program, includes all of the space needs and analysis. And I think you met with, uh, the team, correct? All right. Procurement, um, is Jennifer here?
Paul's here.
Andy, do you want to come up and talk about that?
So the biggest part is the ten thousand dollars. As you know, we work with the county to get their list of items that they see for this building. I don't have necessarily, we have some specifics. As you can see, there's usually what we do with the construction is the seventeen five, but we have a ten thousand dollar budget for it. That list is an itemized list that comes from the county and they're just basic upgrades to this building. But it's very, very minimal for this year.
And the one point two million?
Yes. So the one point two million is the energy savings partnership that we entered into with Honeywell. So that is the guaranteed energy savings program. That will probably include expenditures like the replacement of the chiller for the police department. It'll remove certain other capital expenditures from CIP and from our budget. And that is not, it's not a, um, a general obligation bond. That would be, um, a, a bond that would be associated with our energy savings. So the revenue source would be us not paying for energy and instead paying down the debt on that. The idea being that, is that we would, um, produce at least enough savings to pay for the improvements and hopefully more by spending less money on energy. That being said, before we ever engage any of these projects, that's all got to come be analyzed. Honeywell is just doing a survey right now of all of our infrastructure to make sure that there are even projects that can achieve those savings.
Now, there's, does this include any net savings from rebates from Delmarva Power or? Because there are, there are extensive programs.
Our energy consultants, consultant Richard Anderson is looking into that.
Because this is a, this is a gross number, not a net number.
That's a gross number, yeah.
So it could be lower than this.
So it's on here because Keith got to have it on here. That's on here, right?
No, I got it written down, she wouldn't get it right.
Yeah, so the, Richard Anderson. So when chief saves money at the police department because the chiller finally works, we're going to be able to gauge through Honeywell how much money we save and that savings will go towards paying for this.
Paying for the debt service on that.
That's correct, and we actually have a thirty percent meeting coming up. I believe it's this week on the, on the seventh. Yep, to talk about what are their proposals of where we would see the most savings and if we want to move forward in any of those directions. So as the mayor mentioned before we're making decisions.
Could we get the, um-
Report whatever.
Not the report. I, I'm interested, I'm more interested in the rebate because the rebates, when we did it, were really significant.
Yeah, we're exploring both the rebate and the Maryland Energy Department has some grants.
Right, I got grant to Maryland-
We're going, we're going in both directions.
Could you give us the list besides the chiller? Because I just want to, I want to make sure not to let's going on in here.
I just don't know what it is yet, but yes. And, and we agree, yeah, but yes. We meet either tomorrow or Wednesday with Honeywell for that thirty percent meeting. We'll share whatever we've got.
Where did we come up with the one point two million dollars?
I think it was their estimate. Was it Honeywell's estimate?
Yeah.
And we're sure it's gross. I'm just going to hammer this because-
Yeah.
At this point, the number is here, is just a number.
It's just a number.
Right.
This, that is just a CIP number, but, you know.
Well, but we also, when we take a look, Barbara Keane Thornton's here next year talking about this and the stuff that's on the books and the stuff that has to be reported. If that isn't one point two million and that helps us in some other way, some other place, I just, but we don't. Do you want to ask it? I think we're asking the same question.
Yeah.
You okay?
Go ahead.
You go, I'm good.
No, no. I'm satisfied as long as I understand that that's part of the discussion. What I, what I don't want them to do is I don't want them to, to all of a sudden say that's the net number.
No, that's not going to be the net cost. And the idea is the guaranteed savings is you will see the return.
I'm not talking about savings. I'm not talking about savings. I'm talking about purchase, purchase rebates. That's, that's entirely separate purchase rebates, okay? Okay, because that make, that can make a huge difference. That may be the cost, but I just want to make sure we, we-
We'll, we'll look into that.
Okay.
And I don't mean to get mired down in the second line on the first slide, but so many council people who have served before me have said that their job is really fiduciary. So I'm going to take my fiduciary responsibility very seriously.
It, it is probably-
It reminds me of Mr. Anderson going, you're going to save money here. And then the following year saying costs have gone up, so everything you put into it, you didn't get the same. Every street light that was off, you still got charged for.
I remember that, I remember that.
And then-
Just, just wait about-
In a year where the wastewater treatment plant is going to go online, if Honeywell has any idea about how we can save, we're on that end because that's where so much of the cost-
It's our biggest energy consumer.
Our biggest energy, energy consumer. So this is a nice number for them to put in. What I don't want people to think is we're saving one point two million dollars.
Right.
Because it does say energies, it says energy savings investments. Three things that don't normally go on the bill at the same time.
It's still spending that money, but not spending that money on paying for energy.
Interest rates are going up too.
Right, yeah.
Going to get a hat to us. Okay. If you could, if you would, is anybody going to that meeting, can you take chat?
Is anybody going to that meeting?
Yeah, is anybody going to?
Yeah, there's a bunch of people going. I don't think they need me. They have Keith. I'll, I'll grill him separately, he'll be fine.
All right, thanks, Andy.
Yep.
Chief?
Thanks, Andy. So the first number we'll hear is chief's projected savings number.
With all these new cars.
Oh, see, he's starting already.
Be gassed, evening, exactly the man.
Good evening, chief. How are you?
Good evening, I'm, I'm well, thank you. It is kind of warm up here.
No, please, please don't turn on the air again. Who's the architect?
The ghost got warmed.
So, Mr. President, I don't know how you guys want to go through this. In years past, we just, we just paused and you asked questions if you wanted to. But the one thing that I, I think needs to be said about this is there's, there is a plan here that is different from previous year's plans in that it changes the sourcing for paying for patrol vehicles and, or for vehicles. The reason being is, is multi-fold. One is that this is usually our biggest ticket item in our CIP in cash. Second is that we burn through vehicles rapidly. They do not last more than three years. And there are opportunities for us to spend less per vehicle if we enter into full term key leases and, and cycle through the vehicles. So as a package, it becomes a lease package that we are, are moving through these vehicles in a more, um, a cost-effective manner. And over time, we actually end up saving money. So not, not much. Over time, we end up saving like fifty thousand dollars. But we do, we do end up saving. We do end up saving over the long term. Until we get to that stable platform where we're, you know, spending less per year, there is still a net savings, even in the, even in the interim where you're building up, where you're both paying for vehicles and you're leasing, you know, adding lease payment to your operating costs.
I've got a couple of questions before we start that probably would make it go quick because I think we all got to, I hope everybody did their, looked at the thing beforehand because I don't like going over it line by line. No, but if you have questions, we definitely want to get to questions. One question I had is under the lease agreements, we are still responsible for maintenance? Or is that part of the lease?
The lease financing that's provided here is more just a debt instrument.
So your maintenance course, your main maintenance costs will still remain?
Right.
So I'd expect that to remain. And, and if you look at, you know, turnkey police vehicle pack, lease packages out there, they're all over. They're geographically, so it's not like, you know, you're going to the dealership down the street necessarily. the street necessarily. That may be an option, but it doesn't necessarily present an additional advantage on maintenance costs, I would think.
Because I have a question, are you...
No, I have, the only other one I have is my favorite one. We are trying to, we're on a cycle now where we have X number of vehicles every year that we're going to replace, so we're not getting hit.
That's correct. Actually, this package that we have presented to you today starts out with 12 this year, and then next year, we bump it down to 10, but that would be the cycle.
Gotcha, okay. That's my question.
Yes, sir.
Are, are we looking to move towards more of an SUV Ford Explorer? Is that where we're moving towards?
Absolutely, and that's what we find really suits, actually not the Ford, but, but the Chevy, it's more of a midsize. And for some of our more urban streets, which tend to be more narrow, that fits really well. This one has the all-wheel drive capability, so it handles kind of some of those other conditions that come up from time to time, depending on the season. It's a little higher up, so you have a little bit of tactical advantage. We've been watching what other agencies in the region are moving towards, and it's definitely the SUV now, with all of the equipment that the officers carry, they can sustain themselves quite well with all of the room and all of the, all the equipment fits quite nicely. The portability really works for the officers. We've had a couple of these out on the road and they're really well received.
Good, good, okay. Secondly, the CID evidence vehicle, are we, are we looking to add proper staffing for that as well? Like dedicated personnel for that as well? I mean, specific tech position for that?
We have looked into, from time to time, a civilian-style position to handle that, but that's certainly not, not included in this particular CIP at this time. Right now, we have individual officers with a number of different pieces of equipment, and it would be a lot better if we could centralize that in one vehicle and have that available for everyone, instead of having people respond back and forth.
When we describe the CID vehicles, I'm just saying, there's a difference between this slide and the previous slide before. I'm just, I'm just wondering. We described them as three smaller sedans. Each sedan is, with equipment, is approximately $21,000, and that includes the emergency laces and the sirens, and assuming of the computer portal, all of that. No, that's not going in there.
That's correct.
Because those SUVs are now $55,000 and $60,000 a piece, is how you described the ones up top. So my question is, what is the final lease cost for one of them? I see the total cost is $690,000, and you did rightfully mention that you asked for 12 and got eight, so I'm trying to figure out what the true cost of one of them is, the lease cost, not the cost of it, because we're not doing it that way. So when we go back and we're trying to put money back into that little graph here that Mr. Corddry gave us at the beginning, that should have given us to this at the end, so we didn't panic beforehand.
We have a spreadsheet.
You already asked for it.
We, we have a spreadsheet of that, which we deter, we used to determine whether or not we were going to even put forward this idea. Because if it, if it had cost more to make the lease payments in total, which, you know, balloon at year six, and then start to finally get level again, then we weren't going to put that forward. So total, it ends up being a small savings per year, less and less by the sixth year.
This, okay, so what's the cost of one lease?
I don't remember.
Can you get us that?
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll get that.
Yes.
And then, it also says in the paragraph that there are no vehicles listed for surplus in FY18. You, what the mayor said previously was that we're burning through them every three years, but our lease is for six?
I don't remember exactly. I, I said six.
Sounds like what I said with my cars.
I can't remember exactly what it is, but we've got, we've got a spreadsheet that, forget...
I'm just, are we under a bar simply because of all the use? If you're done with it in three years, but you paid for it for six?
No, but, no, and, and may, I may be getting that wrong, but we've, we've got a spreadsheet that lays it all out, but there will be a couple, and maybe it's the last one, maybe 18 is the last one, but there are years that we didn't buy police vehicles, so there will be gaps where they're not coming off.
And the only other suggestion or question I have is, if we were going with the bigger ones that are replacing the ones, could I ask a question as to why some of the other ones couldn't be moved down into CID?
That's what happens currently, they do.
Well, no, because the, the little black ones, you know, pick up.
But some of them with the square wheels?
Those are the ones I wanted you to buy.
Some of the ones with the square wheels do get moved down. They just don't last very long.
Right. I'm just trying to, you got 12, you asked for 12, you got eight, you're asking for 12 again, I'm trying to come up within my head where all these vehicles are going once they have met your, I know some of the, some of the community policing has some of the older vehicles out there as well, but I'm not so sure paying for a vehicle for six years if it's only going to last you for three is...
I could be wrong.
Okay.
We'll get to the lease cost and the...
Keep, keep the spreadsheet. Police vehicles, mine, um, it's raw. I may stay late just to get that.
I can relate to you from right there.
You need, you need to find something else this, your time. Okay, all right. Mr. Rudisil, any questions? Okay.
Anything else, sir?
You answered the tough ones, so. And again, I think that we, you know, once we get the information that we talked about, it'll be fun.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Have a quiet night. Okay.
So, getting off the ground.
Is that what she said? We get, we get tired, we get cranky.
That's, that's what I'm banking on, I'm just kidding. Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yeah, it does. She reprogrammed it before she gave it back to me.
I have no introductory remarks.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the introductory.
I'm waiting for your questions.
I thought this was going to be a very short presentation. Couple of questions. The SCBA that's there?
Yes.
Is that additional or is that replace?
Complete replacement.
Complete replacement, and, and that's on, is that on rotation as well?
It is. NFPA requires it for 15 years.
Right. And I assume that's the same with the, there was gear, there was turnout gear in there?
Turnout gear is not in the CIP.
It's not?
It's in general operating.
But it's under the same, it's, it's replaced?
10 years.
10 years, okay. The, the lease purchases are the equipment, I assume?
For FY19.
Yeah. Lease purchase of 180,000?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a combination.
Staff vehicle replacement?
Staff vehicle.
It's 180?
Staff vehicle replacement, not, not engine.
The Chevy.
Not engine.
That's correct.
That's lease.
I never heard of that. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Although, do you want to mention the plan to acquire...
That'll be up to you, Mayor, if I mention it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we, the, the fire department, the city of Salisbury Fire Department is in receipt of an estate trust, and we have received a notification of that. Mr. Tillman's office is in the process of reviewing the paperwork for that. If, if it is legit, which we have no reason to think it isn't, and we accept the estate trust, we'll be offsetting two of the capital improvement projects slated for 19 with a cash purchase, thus offsetting that considerably.
So is it a ladder truck or is it...
Oh, no, 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 it won't, it's not that considerable.
I can try, I can try.
It's not that considerable.
So it's a, it's a vehicle, it's a vehicle.
Yeah, would you like me to detail it, Mayor?
No, it's all right, if you don't, I don't want to...
Yeah, we, yeah, we're proposing to offset the, the utility medical transport units completely and half of the staff vehicle.
Very nice.
Which would relieve the debt service and relieve, obviously, the CIP.
That won't take you long to...
And, and obviously, we'd be coming, we'll have to come back before council for acceptance of that and then execution, yeah.
To be honest, I don't have anything other than questions. Mr. Bola?
No, and that's good news, so, no, I think you'll get consensus on that.
Mr. Rudisil?
I do, but his good news is maybe...
That was the plan.
No, I was just, it's one of the things that's in this section that is not in the police section, is a breakdown of what each one of these, you know, you're, if you were to get all five at 180, that's only $36,000 a piece now. I'm, I'm looking at that truck right there, and there's some stuff on there that has to go on there to meet the standards that you have to have, so I was just wondering how you did that with, but that's saying that the crown, that's saying all of them were equal, and they're not all equal, so I understand that as well. So I was just wondering about a breakdown of that, but that's, if you can addend Keith's spreadsheet on the police vehicles with just a sentence or two...
Keith won't allow me access to his spreadsheet, for, for good reason.
But if not necessary, till you find out whether or not you're going to get the, you'll be eligible for it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you. Have a good evening. See that? So, so, so the secret is you have to bring money to the table and then you get...
You bring more money, you have more toys.
Bring money with you.
Bring more money, you bring more toys.
That's right.
That's all.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Chief.
It's like asking dad for funds. Give him the dad look.
Sorry, man.
So Mr. Baker's bringing all sorts of money with him tonight.
Are you? No. Probably not, okay. Do you have an introduction for this one?
No. Well, the only thing I will say is that several of the Poplar Hill Mansion projects are, we are pursuing some grant funding right now through Maryland Historical Trust. That doesn't affect FY19, but future years, so just kind of FYI, we're, we're going after some funding right now. And, and that's true through virtually all of the CIP, is we, you know, we're busy pursuing grants, you know, on a near constant basis, but Poplar Hill Mansion, you know, it could cover a number of the projects, so I think it was worth mentioning.
Now I forgot which one this was. Oh, yeah, Road to Freedom, okay.
Is there a list?
Yeah, there is.
Where is that?
It's on the top of the, down to the...
Is it under field operations?
It's under field operations. Field operations, and there's three lists.
What page are you on?
I'm trying to remember, I haven't, I haven't listed down, they're ranked, five, six being the highest, right?
Oh, are you talking about streets?
Streets.
Yeah.
Six being the highest, one being the lowest, and we're...
That's in your section.
You're on, oh, yeah.
Oh, whoa.
That's infrastructure and development.
That's infrastructure.
We'll get there.
That's what I, okay. Yeah, this one I have...
So this begins with page 61, the project sheets begin with page 61, the midsize excavator, and ends with page 77, so 61 to 77 are the project pages. I'll say that at the beginning from now on, sorry about that.
Yeah, I, like I said, the, those little write-ups on the top really help, because it really identifies when you have a question about a big number, they're usually, it's usually answered up, up in top. The one question I did have concerns the zoo. And my concern is, I was there recently and thought I was going to fall through the floor of the double Y. And I see that that's not in until...
It's next year.
Next year. Is it going to make it?
It, it is a priority, it's important. Now, that being said, you know, there's, there's two ways to do this. There's this way, and there's a second way. The second way is, there's another building right there, the old animal health building, that I've, you know, I've for a long time felt could become the offices. Now, it's a little small, it would need some expansion, and it might, and it would cost more than $185,000 to do, but if we're willing to put the resources into it, we can make it happen.
I forget, so forgive me for the question, but what, in the zoo master plan, what was the, what was the dedicate, what was the use for the, for that abandoned building? Do you remember?
I do not recall.
Can you get that information for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't remember if it was identified, Jack.
Okay, I just, I just don't want somebody falling through that.
It's, yeah, it, it's, one, it needs to happen, two, that's the right corner of the property, so whether it's a new modular building or a rebuild of that building, you know, you're already in the right spot. And in fact, that may end up being an easier project logistically, just because getting a new modular building into that site is going to be challenging enough.
Yeah.
You have to, we're going to have to remove fence, maybe remove trees, it's not going to be easy.
Actually, Pinocchio has a third in our staff. Any questions from anybody on the zoo, on the field ops?
Oh, I think it's probably worth mentioning, this was listed as a $100,000 project last year, so we've recognized, this is a more accurate description of what it would cost to do the right-size mobile or modular building, but again, this is probably pretty low if we were going to renovate a, the old animal health building.
Yeah, I'm not, there was something in, I remember the, there was something in the zoo master plan...
Something other than office.
Other than office. But we'll, we'll get it. Okay, we have no other questions, that's it. We've got to take a little bit of a break, because they have to change the, we've gone over our tape, so we'll take a five-minute...
Good. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.